All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call our meeting to an order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, do we have any awards or recognitions this evening? Okay, still on there? We have, so that leads us to citizens' comments, and I hear we have Lynn with some comments. Can you open them for us?
This is from Angela Lynn Odlum. I will plan to attend the July or August meeting. I would like to submit the below-written comment. My understanding is that Brentwood School District employs one resource officer for the entire school district. Once the construction at Litzinger and High School is complete, I understand that there will be three separate school campuses, one resource officer. Are there any plans to hire two additional resource officers or security guards to enable each campus to have its own resource officer or security guard during school hours? If not, why not? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. And just also, we don't respond to comments during the comments section, but follow up with that if you're interested. That moves us into roll call, please.
Jamie Allen.
Here.
Ryan Lynn.
Here.
Bruce Perkins.
Here.
Keith Reilber.
Here.
Keith Fosser.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Gary Crosswell.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, and moves us into the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you. First off, is our monthly approval of the COVID mitigation plan. I recommend changes to that currently, as you know. For summer school, we're not masked, and we're following all our normal school procedures. It's been very successful, not had any significant COVID breakouts or issues with summer school, and we'll obviously continue to track that over the course of the summer, and we'll talk about that prior to school in August as well. But I recommend that we continue as normal school with no additional protocols at this time.
I move that we approve Ryan's recommendation.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
Right, next up, we have Mr. Norton to talk about our budget for the year, final approval.
What we have before you this evening is the final version of our budget proposal for the 2223 fiscal year. We took into consideration the recommendations from the school board to reassess our draw, our notice to draw from our facilities management team, so that did reduce our capital projects budget by $4.6 million. We did have an amount that we noticed when we saw the draw scheduled that was overly reported. If there's an amount that we consider that is necessary to fund that project, it'll last for those provisions as the year progresses. Out of the primary capital budget, we removed $1.5 million per construction cost, and then out of the bond project, we removed $3.1 million. No other budget revisions or costs were applied. We are in the process of continuously reviewing our final version of our budget, so if there are other opportunities that could be conservative, we will apply those. This is an action item, so we do ask for your approval. I know if there's any questions.
You, just a point of clarification, so there is a revision, but ultimately, we're approving the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget with the revision included?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022-23 budget with the inclusion of revision number two.
So I'm sorry, just being a... There is no revision because we haven't actually approved the budget? Yeah. This is the final version. This is the reduction of $4.6 million is recognizing the reduction from the original version, the original draft. This is the final draft for approval.
I think so. I think where the problem is, is that on our list, the budget revision for '22 is on their first, and so...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so that's why, that's where the confusion's coming, but I think we probably can approve our order.
I can step back and the budget revision number two.
No, no, let's, I, so I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022-23 budget as detailed here.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you for making the changes.
Yep, appreciate that.
Thank you. Sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one is approved.
Great, and then next, we're, Matt can stay up here, but we're looking for a resolution for July bill payments, that's in case we choose to not have a July meeting, we still need to pay the bills.
We also need to approve the budget revision number two.
I'm sorry.
We're all, we're all over the agenda today.
You wanna throw it out? Yeah, yeah. I screwed it up. So, I, I move that we approve budget, the budget revision number two.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
I now move, based on comments, that we move the resolution for approving July bill payments in the instance where we do not convene in July.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also approved.
All right, thank you.
Yes, agreed.
Just have a crossing guard agreement? That is our next item.
Just our yearly, I bring on with the city to provide the crossing guard.
I move that we approve the school crossing guard agreement as outlined.
Second.
Discussion? Have we ever paid for the crossing guard ourselves?
Well, we reimbursed the city.
I'm just, what benefit is it for us to run that person through their payroll versus ours? I'm just curious, because we're just basically writing a check, so it's a wash. I didn't know if there was...
It's a good question. I mean, it's, it was before my time, and it was an agreement that, but Matt, you couldn't expound on it, I think there's...
So primarily has to do with the licensing of a actual qualified licensed posted officer, so all of their requirements, all of their insurance, that is all handled through the city, and that's their responsibility. School districts that typically start hiring their own SROs are either a person that is basically a security guard that cannot carry a firearm, cannot have any kind of rest authority...
We're talking crossing guard.
Crossing guard, you always have that relationship because it's primarily as to the licensing and the insurance combined itself. So they're responsible for, it's more like a contracted service, and then they also have a direct relationship with the city to maintain those crossing areas.
So are we gonna, if the grant goes as planned, and it's done, and we're gonna be going back and forth with Mark Twain students and all that, will we then do like an addendum to this, if we have to add additional ones to different streets and all that, so we have that? Will the room just doesn't hold us just to the ones that are being there next year?
The future of all of them.
But you're right, if passing for Brentwood Boulevard...
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately, yeah, we could, we could add to this, carry in if we get a second or a third guard for, especially for that one year in particular.
The agreement has asked that the amounts of the costs, the amounts of crossing guards and the amounts of dollar amounts allocated can be adjusted based on the agreement of the parties.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next up, we have our annual physician service agreement. This is the doctor that agrees at no cost to serve as a consultant for our district nurses.
I move that we approve the physician service agreement for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, there's no point of clarification, so the subsidy is no longer available for early childhood students, is that correct? So what are we going to be doing in that instance?
You can see the rates below, and it has early childhood on there, and they are a little higher than the other levels.
Oh, there, okay, I did not see it, thank you.
So, we, we started doing that, that breakfast, well, everything was free, but then we started doing the breakfast in that cafe. I know the SSD kids run it, where they have their coffee bar and all that stuff. Did we ever get any data back on how many people were using it, and is there any room in our budget, or is there any room for discussion on offering breakfast free to our students going forward?
We could, we could run the, we could run the numbers and share that with the board in terms of how many breakfasts were served on it, A, what that would equate to if the district wanted to subsidize that going forward.
I'd be interested to see how much participation there was. There were a lot of studies that were done about having breakfast and how that was important and learning and all of that, so if there is any data to look at, as well as another question to fold to this is, how are we doing on getting all that paperwork filled out? Because for a couple of years, they didn't have to do it, and that has a lot to do with our funding. Are we back to all of those families filling out the proper forms? Have we lost a lot of those families, and it's affecting our numbers, and do we need to do some housekeeping and really zonin' on that so that we get back where we need to be, and those families aren't, you know, hit with these, and four of the kids don't have meals?
We've been sending out communications, and we'll continue to hit that in some various ways. I think at one point, we definitely had lost some of those. I know we've recovered it to some extent through some pretty active campaigning in terms of people signing up for the free re dues, because people just gotten understandably in the habit of they didn't have to to get those, so that's gonna be really important coming into this year, that people realize it's no longer subsidized. But we, we can pull those costs together in terms of breakfasts pretty easily.
So if we approve, we have to prove this because it has to be, you know, this mandate or whatever, then we can come back and have, have another discussion on how much it would cost the district, et cetera?
Yeah, and we would have to talk about that, too, if we're gonna, you know, this is, this is what we have to charge, and this is what we would have to, I'm assuming, Matt and I can talk further, what we would have to charge ourselves.
Yes.
In terms of if we were gonna subsidize that, so...
Matt, I would recommend, if you want to go do that, that we run that back through the financing facilities committee, that way we can have a conversation and then come back with, we look at it tighter than the five and 10-year plan.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, we'll have to look at all that. I don't know if it's gonna be a pragmatic choice or not, but it's, it's a good number to take a look at, so...
I mean, at the elementary level, too, is that there's, we need some teacher or someone that we're paying to be down there to watch the kids as well. I mean, I know that, I saw plenty of kids, but I didn't need to, I mean, I'm saying, I don't know anything about people's families, but it seemed like maybe it was an early babysitter for some people that were sending their kid, you know, they could get their kids out to school a little bit earlier, not where...
And it was also a high grade.
At the high school level, it's a different story, you don't really, but I, I can tell you from driving by that school on my way to work every day, that there was some people that were growing up that were probably, I know their parents, and they were just getting rid of their kids because they couldn't. And so I was wondering, like, do we have to pay for something to watch, you know, like, it's not just the food cost, but it's also supervision for the kids in, you know, are the, the worker, the cafeteria workers watching the kids, or some, is there a teacher or a special or something like that that's watching them, because there's some added costs there?
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Thanks, meaning us on meal prices. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Next up, we have our annual physician service agreement. This is the doctor that agrees at no cost to serve as a consultant for our district nurses.
I move that we approve the physician service agreement for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Second.
Discussion?
Do you know, do you know how often we actually use this resource? Do you have any ideas?
I know we, I know what they calling periodically.
It tends to be in the beginning of the year, when you're getting things set up, and then there's a question on immunizations and stuff like that. COVID, we did reach out to them a few times in the last couple of years, but...
Yeah, not a lot.
It hasn't been, like...
Is this statutorily required or something?
Yes, all nurses have to have their doctor's license.
Okay.
And with a doctor, how is the insurance taken care of? Is that something that they have to cover themselves, or is that something that you have to take, it's all through?
It's all through the doctor.
Correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Next up, annual PEGS agreement. If you're not familiar, that is a gifted program that's ran through the Lambert School District, and it's for very advanced students who have, they have to test into an IQ of 145 or higher, so it's a very specialized program. I believe we currently have one student in it at this time that they'll pay for, so it's a, it's a good program and a nice, very specialized service.
I move that we approve the PEGS agreement for the individual named for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Second.
Discussion?
Does this student count in our ADA or does it count for numbers?
Our ADA.
Okay. We can get the state A on this, based upon...
Correct.
Do you think they're great? It is?
It's a third or fourth rate.
Oh, okay, still a little, okay.
I knew that had been discussed when we had another elementary kid that was younger interested, and so I was just wondering if it had gone to elementary level, if we were still in the standard high school.
They have, at least they used to, and I assume they still, that they have a program that will go all the way through high school.
It does, if you wish.
I've actually, last couple of years, had an official side.
I know it had high school.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next up, this is, again, Matt, feel free to kind of jump in. Matt and I met with, this is a group called MoCAT, and basically, they are a competitive investment group that, that basically competes with MOSF. So as you know, right now, we do all of our, all of our investment, additional investing through MOSF. MoCAT is similar, but all this does is by, by the Board confirming this resolution, it gives Matt and I the ability to look at the rates between the two, between MoCAT and MOSF, and the city is ever offering the best rates, they do all, of course, the fact that, you know, we're very restricted in what we can invest in, so they offer generally very similar products in terms of, you know, treacheries and so forth, but it just gets an additional choice for us, and it's good competition. They also offer some additional services at no cost, where they have that proprietary software program, where they're able to come in and, you know, sit with us and really, you know, take a look at our budget history, and, you know, even beyond, and, you know, of course, Matt looks and thinks, oh, okay, well, you know, we could have this million dollars, you know, invested for 90 days, and then we're gonna need it for payroll. Well, they get it down to, you know, 84 days or 93 days, until you're gonna need that money, so it's, you know, it's all this, you know, small amounts, obviously, but it adds up, and so we're, we're interested in having that. We had our initial meeting with them, and then we'll have a follow-up where we take a look at that software and kind of track out, just kind of how we keep every penny out of our additional funding service, I should say. Matt, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's it. With the new rising federal interest rates, we were wanting to get ahead of that, begin to shop out some of our prices, taking most advantages, since CDs or secured investments seem to be able to have a little bit more opportunity to grow.
I move that we approve the Board resolution as outlined.
Second.
Discussion?
So, I, just a couple of questions. Have we had someone just review the language? I don't, I mean, right off the bat, when I read this, it's, we're signing that it deemed to be advisable in the best interest of us to participate in that? Would, I just, if we could have someone review the language, because what I understand is, I love the idea, we're gonna shop around.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean, to me, it's necessarily in our best interest to go use that, if that makes sense.
To use, no, it does, yeah.
Just, my point is, if we have someone just look at the language of that?
I already did.
Okay.
I had one of the, I had our contract attorney and two of their, you didn't, she'd already reviewed it, you know, many other districts.
I was wondering if other districts are doing the same thing.
Yeah, there's a lot that are already signed up or recently are signing up in MoCAT.
On the second page, is it supposed to say September 24, 2020?
Is that under Board resolution or instrument?
In terms of adoption.
Take a look at that.
I don't know if it was saying that they can go back and look at our stuff from September 24, 2020 to now, and give us advice, or if that's a typo.
That is their, that is, the way I read that, is that, that is when their agreement started. I mean, that's when they, that's when MoCAT came into existence, right?
Okay, so that's their day of existence.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, right, Matt, the intent here is we've got some competition in it, we're gonna go look at this, fee structures, et cetera, I mean, taxes returned, fee structures, I'm assuming are similar, but we're gonna use this.
We're comparing the structure directly to MOSF. We're not permitted to go after or procure any kind of investment with the Board's authorization, so even if it was our local banks, we would have to ask for the Board's permission and authorization to pursue an outside investment.
We may never use them.
I guess that's where I'm going.
And we don't have to, there's nothing in this, I double-checked that with the attorneys as well, there's nothing in this agreement that says we have to put a penny with this group under any situation.
And that was my point around the language, in the best interest, I don't suggest that if we did something else, we weren't acting in the best interest of the district.
No.
And currently, this would give us the opportunity to invest with PNC, MOSF, PM, and MoCAT.
Do we already have an agreement with PMA Asset Management? Because don't they usually manage MOSF?
We currently have a, an association and an agreement with PM, PM, with MOSF, yes.
Okay, as I was, I was getting my acronym mixed up, I've seen PMA in here, and I think, you know, we already have an agreement with them, and this is...
But they're PMA, and that's PM.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, guys.
Right, and that's all the super agent report.
All right, so that moves us then to the NSBA delegate report. Do you have any updates, Steve?
Yeah, we have the, the June conference, which has a name that's too long to say.
Is that the Ignite?
Ignite, Great Ideas, yes, I think.
Did they think of Ignite?
Well, you know that I had an idea, but, but anyway, so we elected the statewide officers and the new president of the NSBA, Ray Murphy, who's a character in Missouri, it's a K district, which I think, he's a really good guy, and then someone named Ruth Johnson is the presidential actions commander, and Kielier, and Patty Quisenberry is the vice president. But there was a presentation, Brian, you probably know all about this, in which, about, it was that, what's that guy's name? He was the superintendent in Hatlenville, Mike Fulton is running this thing, he made a presentation on something about competency-based learning, and it's like all those things, I, I hear that, that just seems meaningless to me, those words that come up with these things, but I went through the presentation, and I kind of started to slowly catch on to what they were talking about, and there's been some reports, and I meant to go look at them, read them, and he's, something that they're trying to make a move, it sounds, to me, it sounds like what we always see we're trying to do here is, is to get the kids as an individual and teach to what his or her needs are, and so I was going to try to read and understand some more, but would you know what's all going on with that, this is something that's been around for a while?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of presentations by, you know, Mike and some of the other, few of the other superintendents he's worked with. I mean, a lot of it's coming down to, it's, it's all this effort, which we've been involved with, which is to try to adjust how the state is, you know, doing the accreditation and so forth for schools, so it's all tacking into a lot of IMSA recommendations, it's kind of the underlying theme, so what a lot of that work is, you know, how are we really judging a school to be successful in terms of college and career readiness and, and, you know, actual skills for students beyond a, you know, once-a-year test, and a lot of the things that we frankly have been doing as a district, so...
Yeah, that's just me, but, you know, maybe, you know, it's presented like it's a new concept for people, I don't know, I don't know what you're doing, but, but it caused me to be curious, and so I was gonna try to look at those reports and stuff.
That's good stuff.
See if I can...
Yes, good.
And that's all I got.
I have one thing to add to that. I did get an email from a school board member from Webster, and they were working together, so there are several districts, Webster, Kirkwood, McLeod, University City, and Clayton, have all kind of come together to have a legislative group that is there to learn more about what the House of Assembly in Missouri, and then to also be able to advocate on behalf of other schools in our region, when you're reaching out to representatives. So I passed along to Keith, all things legislative, I passed along to Keith, and he agreed. I'm sure he's scared and enthusiastic, I couldn't tell already email, but, to participate in this group for us, and he is, will be our, our legislative guy representing Brentwood in this group. One thing that this gentleman, Alex, asked is if we have an alternative, if there's somebody else that Keith isn't able to make it, if there's anyone else that's interested in participating, so, just throwing that out to the group, if you're interested in things in the legislative...
The player would be the alternate. Or...
I don't know. I think you want to be, yeah, I kind of...
I think our name, right? You just put that...
Do you want to just, do you want to, okay, so do you need to be, so I will...
We'll make that the alternate.
Okay, I'll forward you, I'll forward everyone this email about this group, just to hear and inform that, but Jamie, I'll respond, give him your name, I'd have to see on that, but, I mean, Alex is a nice, a nice guy from Websterboro, so I...
Do you know him at all?
I've met him, I met him actually at the conferences past year, but he's been on the board for a while now.
Well, I think that's good, when, there was a time when Charlie Henry was the superintendent, where he tried to start a committee or, in Brentwood, and there were two or three meetings, and they kind of, kind of disagreed in control of it, but I think it's, having a board of a district, or, I'll turn it on to a domain, I added two...
I agree.
But, but I think that's good.
Yeah, they're, they're reaching out to everyone.
Right.
I mean, it would be great if they can get a representative from every school district, because that's the goal, if it's the same, like, high school.
I mean, it would be great if they can get a representative from every school district, because that's, that's the goal in the same, uh, state and county. Okay, thanks, Jamie. And then SSD, FD, right?
Yeah, so I had my first opportunity to attend the SSD meeting. This was the beginning of June. Um, it was a really interesting meeting. They started off with a bit of reorganization of all the sub-districts. Um, I guess with the population consensus that came out, both Hazelwood and Jennings, the population declined. And so they want to make every district, um, even across the board. So the impact of Brentwood, um, was we were in, we were in District Fund and Maplewood and Richmond Heights were in our sub-district as well. Um, but they got moved to Subdistrict One and that is with, uh, Hazelwood. So just Maplewood and Richmond Heights have moved. There's a couple of other moves. Um, Ladue moved to District Six and, um, Clay moved to Subdistrict, um, Seven with Brentwood.
So who are we?
So we have Kirkwood, Lindbergh, Valley Park and Webster Grove.
That would geographically make sense.
It, it, it's all based on the population. That's, that's why they restructured it when they did it, so, yeah. Didn't make a lot of sense, but, um, I guess the, the thing I was really impressed with was they went over the strategic plan for twenty twenty-two to all the way to twenty twenty-seven. Um, and I just wanted to kind of share this. I thought this was just really, really well done. Um, they put a lot of data and a lot of information in this for the special school district, but their mission is to support and empower students of all learning abilities to excel to their greatest potential. And they really put a really great plan together to achieve that. And they, they wanna partner with all the school districts across the board to make that happen. So I think they mentioned they'll be reaching out to you, um, definitely to, to talk about some of those things in June, late June, early July, so.
Yeah, I, I was at one presentation on our six sub, so it was, it's good.
Yeah, it was really good.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and then I've already discussed the legislative advocacy I jumped ahead. Um, any board committee okay? Um, it's been a pretty quiet year through the summer perhaps, or maybe it's a bit closer this whole year.
And is that an item we're gonna talk about at the retreat to see who wants to go where, anybody's gonna move?
We moved you. So you were on the curriculum today now? I didn't, um, at our last meeting? But yes, we were talking about that. One thing that we have talked about at the retreat is just making sure that we have the right subcommittees for what we're gonna be doing and making sure people are happy where they are and thinking about what is the, what are the things we want to get out of those subcommittees and then who's moving forward. So there will be some discussion at our retreat about that, at least.
Probably the only one we need to have this summer, and I'll be sharing a calendar invite from Navigate, but to the Finance Facilities Committee, um, on July twenty-ninth. Um, we're gonna have a meeting at, we're also, I remember it's June twenty-ninth. June twenty-ninth, and like I said, I'll send you the calendar invite because we're gonna do it over at Navigate's offices. If, if you guys are, if those three folks are available for, uh, for that, because we have the design, the DB estimates updated, um, from HDK and Navigate. So it's timely to, to, to sit with those and talk about it a little bit. So be looking for that. I just, I was gonna send out a reminder, but then I wanted the, I didn't have their address and so forth.
For the...
The AccuBridge we need to run.
The nicest building on that road.
Yeah, I, I know where it's at, like before you get stopped.
Will there be a curriculum meeting at all during the summer?
I wouldn't anticipate it. Um...
I, I don't...
But there is, you can just let me know. I'm more than happy to try to...
We could do more fall.
We could talk about it, yeah. I would say, you know, September would be great.
Okay. And the last thing we have here is board retreats. Um, I feel like everyone on everyone scheduled July twenty-second in the morning.
You're... It's an exciting retreat.
It's air conditioned, so it'll be nice. And, yeah, so Jamie and I are gonna need to kind of talk about, we talked about it, at least for an agenda at some point. Um, and so we'll share that with everyone who can add, add maybe to that, that coming up. Any questions about that board retreat or? All right, so then upcoming events, uh, we do have our July meetings on the calendar. We need to have those. Those are tentative at this point, I would say. The board retreat and then our meetings in August. We are getting emails about the, uh, annual conference, for the NSBA annual conference in November. If anyone knows they're gonna go, I guess, let Kate know. I...
I assume so.
Yeah, we encourage everyone to consider it. It'd be good bonding for us all to go down there and there's always some good, um, we always learn some things, so.
Yeah, Kate, add that everyone as well. Can we?
And Lindsay and Brian and I enjoyed that evening at the restaurant.
We always have a good time. We should be good with it being this late. Sometimes it just would land on homecoming, so that might have gone. So with it being this late, I don't think it will, but, you know, as the different schools are planning some, maybe if they can, for us, because we're parents, you know, maybe know that that is a weekend that ideally we cannot have major school functions to participate in would be more helpful for us to be able to go as a group.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let some people know if we can avoid that.
All right. Any, anything on the upcoming events?
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session for the reasons stated in the agenda.
Second.
All right. You have a call.
Jamie Allen?
Yes.
Brian Clinton?
Here.
Chris Perkins?
Yes.
Keith Denver?
Yes.
Keith Lawson?
Yes.
Lindsay Spencer?
Yes.
Jerry Lawson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.